This meeting of the Montague County Board of Education will come to order. Mrs. Markucci's class, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I would lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I say it every time. Kids always make a sound like that.
Those aren't kids. So what class are you with?
Education. 601.
Uh huh.
Education 601.
601, and that is what?
Contact Education.
Oh, well, welcome. You're going to have a wonderful time this evening. It's very exciting here, so just hang on, stick with it, okay?
She painted a nice picture.
All right. There are no delegations this evening, but we do have a resolution. The resolution is for Instructional Assistance Day. Whereas paraprofessionals and aides assist teachers in every way, whereas they strive to ensure student success every day, whereas our classrooms and school buses wouldn't be the same without their dedication, therefore, I, Barbara Parsons, on behalf of the Montague County Board of Education, declare March 6th, 2015 as Instructional Assistance Day. So that is to let them know, we really do appreciate all the assistance that they provide, and they are invaluable, and we're very fortunate in this county to have the assistance that we do. Okay, reports, discussion, follow-up. Terry Hawkins.
Madam President, we have a presentation on summer snowflakes this evening, and I believe Mrs. Talarico will lead off with that.
Thank you. Julia Hamilton is here this evening, as she was last year, and we are here to share with you some exciting news about extended learning opportunities. As you know, we have several of those in place in our after-school programming currently, but the Summer Snowflakes program, which was initiated by us and authorized by, of course, this board, was such a success last year, and our feedback was extremely positive. We'd like for you to entertain that for year two. And Julia is here to talk about some of the offerings, and how it is all-encompassing, actually, with kindergarten through the senior high school. So if you would give us about five minutes for Julia to elaborate on this. The superintendent did give us a budget of $75,000. We are presenting a program that would cost $73,000. So we feel that we have met his guidance there in that area. So we would ask for your support on this, and again, it's so beneficial to not only the students, but our teaching staff and the community as well. So Julia, please.
Well, as Donna had mentioned, we had really great feedback from this far, not only from students and parents, I bet I received a lot of phone calls from them, but also the staff. So if you'll notice on here, a lot of the elementary-level programming, we have several repeats from last year, and all of the instructors that we had last year are interested in doing this again. They were so enthusiastic about it, they want to do it again. So we've kind of expanded on our offerings a little bit, too. So our Arts for All program last year, we ran at North Elementary. We had a great participation. We had about 85 registered, about 50 to 60 that attended regularly. We're going to expand upon that, so it's going to be at North and Sheet Lake, and instead of having a breakdown of the art and music classes, we've decided to kind of roll that all into one to increase the participation, and kind of give them a wider range of subjects that they can cover over these two weeks. We did the same with our Let's Move program. That did extremely well. We had a steady participation around 25 to 30 kids, so we've expanded that out of Ridgedale Elementary into Mountain View as well. Our library time will be at all 10 elementaries, just like last year, and I'm excited to say that we have made a partnership with our West Virginia soccer baseball team. So they are going to come into those and do read aloud activities with the kids, and we're going to work on creating an activity booklet that they can complete while they're there, and then at the end, if they've completed that, they'll exchange that for either free tickets or discount things for the game. So we're really excited about that.
Can I participate?
Right. As well, we have some new offerings. We're trying to get a little bit more science-y in there, too. So we have a coding class Chris Urban had turned me onto at North Elementary that will be run by our, the TIS over there, Rich Senator. He has designed a program so that kids can program their own characters. So it kind of takes them from using technology in a passive way to an active way. So they will build their own characters online. They can learn how to create websites. They can learn how to create their own apps. So there's a wide range of things that they're going to be able to do there, and that's potentially going to transfer over into our Tech Fight course that will be at Mylan Park as well. So we're really trying to expand on what we're touching upon in the STEM area for elementary school students. If you flip over, you'll see that we also have an Introduction to Spanish course that we're working on at Eastwood Elementary. So we've got a wide variety, and we've covered almost every elementary school. That was not really, yeah. If you look at our middle school, you'll see that the schematics has come back again this year, except for at Westwood Middle. We will have Project Isaac running there for a full six weeks, and they will be doing their own STEM courses there, so we've left that over there. So everyone will have free access to a STEM program at the middle school level. Our high school level, we expanded upon pretty drastically. Last year, we only had the A C T S A T prep. So we spoke with several of the instructors at the school, and they had a lot of ideas, as you can see. So we have the animal sciences, pre-engineering, STEAM, which will include the arts, and then welding, building, and hydroponics. So we're working on the details of what all they're going to cover in that time, but we've kind of, we've kind of covered every little area that we have.
And I like that you have TRITech at the middle school.
TRITech.
Yes, this is something that we've talked a lot about as far as curriculum across the county, but at least we've put our toe in the water, and we'll see how that turns out.
Right.
I'm excited.
Yeah. And we, so none of these programs, except for TRITech, will have transportation running for them, which helped us put more money toward the actual curriculum itself. When we reviewed how many kids, or how few kids really rode the bus last year, it really just wasn't worth the money to send them there. So instead, we've got all these great offerings.
And the one other, Ready-Freddy.
Ready, that's right. Ready-Freddy is not included on there. I'm not sure how that fell off of there. So we're covering all from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. So we'll have the Ready-Freddy programs that will be running at the majority of our elementary schools.
Okay. So do we need approval? Give us approval? Okay. All right, so now you've heard the Summer Snowflakes presentation. May I have a motion to approve this program?
So move, second.
All right, anybody want to ask any questions? Say anything?
I just always wonder why we do STEAM instead of just STEM. Just drives me nuts.
Arts. Throw that art in there.
And then we call it general education.
Wow.
And engineering sciences is...
Just call it everything.
STEAM is dulling down STEM in my, in one board member's...
STEAM sounds more active, more powerful.
STEM sounds more concentrated.
Okay, we'll argue over it.
Education's all about accuracy.
Anyhow, I agree, I love the arts. I just, I just think that there's, I just, one board member doesn't like STEAM. But I do love this whole program.
I do like the TRITech because they can go and see what they like, but they can also go see what they don't like.
Exactly.
That's the part.
And to get exposed to it.
All right, so I mean, they may think they want to be in a particular arena for their career, but once they get a taste of it, they may find something else in it.
Last year, I know we used our substitute money and other things, and that's what started this county-wide summer program. So this year is actually built into the budget?
Yes, it is in the budget. The superintendent had told us to prepare something to share with you, and if the board had approved it, initially, several, quite a long time ago, actually, he told us to move forward with the idea that this would be in the budget. He would have a number for us, which he did finally give to us, I'm sure with charity's sanctioning here, so that we could put this together in a final form. But you're exactly right, and so we had some leftover monies last year. This year, it had to be built into the budget.
So hopefully, if we're able to manage things well, this will be in our morning. That's the goal.
And an enrichment program.
Yes.
Summer enrichment.
Yes.
Wonderful.
And congratulations on coming in under budget.
It's so far.
So far.
That's the plan.
It's going to be around school.
No, it's, and actually, I mean, it's the loving monies that used to go to community school programs that were different. So this, these are a lot more structured, more academic.
And our own staff are benefiting because they want to do these programs, and they're the ones receiving remuneration for that. So I think it's a win-win on every level.
Good. All right, all in favor of approval of Summer Snowflakes program for this coming summer? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise? Motion carries. Oh, boy. Thank you. Very nice, very, very nice. All right, Jerry, our favorite topic.
Madam President, due to the inclement weather we've had the past few weeks, we need to convert April the 2nd, April the 7th, June the 8th, and June the 9th, two days of instruction. And plus, you have a list of the other days which you've already approved and reconverted, and that will make June the 10th the record day for the last day for teachers.
Okay, and those days again were April 2nd?
April 2nd, April 7th, June the 8th, and June the 9th will become days of instruction.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion to approve that agenda, the calendar change?
So move.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the adjusted calendar? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
As of right now, the last day for students is June the 9th.
As of today.
As of today.
As of today.
Just get a picture of it on your smartphone, and when someone asks you, send them the picture.
And then also, that's what I checked over here. Good Friday and Easter Monday are still protected at this time.
Okay. Good. All right.
Madam President, we have a report on the Mylan Park Elementary, WBU Physical Education, and that would be...
It's already in your agenda, and it was, it's just a ready report.
I would recommend the board to receive and approve it.
All right.
And the Recommit fights look very interesting. That whole project was a real...
Yes. Read and ride, and we are going to four other schools with that this year, and hope to do all of our elementary schools. Judy featured it in the program. It was something we'd seen out of North Carolina, and of course, this little program from WBU has also capitalized on that, and we already have it in place at Focus Mont. So anytime you're out and about and you'd like to see it, of course, Mylan Park has theirs in place, Focus Mont has theirs in place, and it's a really exciting opportunity to combine movement and physical education and reading.
Oh. I know we've worked with them before in trying to enhance the activity level of our students. This has been an ongoing relationship, and it's really nice that things change up a bit, and get a little more exciting, and keep the students interested. So anxious to see how this turns out. All right, now we have a Board Docs presentation.
Yes, Madam President, I believe Beth Harvey is going to do a short presentation on Board Docs.
Yes, and they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I'm gonna get the lights and demonstrate it for you. Okay, Board Docs is a program that is wonderful and loved by the counties that are currently using it, and many other counties are hoping to start using it. It also works well with the Swagit software program, and one of the most coolest features, I think, is the aspect of watching our board meetings online with it being indexed and attached to our agendas.
I'm ready for a public interview. 10, 15, meeting orders.
I'm sorry, it'll be posted on our website.
I'm moved that the board meets and closed session to topics listed.
And you'll notice over here, we have the meeting index. So this is every part where you can skip through the agenda, such as when Terry does his budget presentation, even though it's very riveting, some people may want to skip over that.
I'm going to tell you something.
And with this program, they have that ability. They can switch to, you know, we'll skip the budget and go to recommended positions in a case of just that part of the meeting.
Who would want to miss that?
I can't imagine this is your finance group today.
All right, this is my first report to you of bills to bring to you for your consideration. The exception of bills has actually been fairly slow this year compared to prior years.
And you'll notice how they do the switch of the camera. Swagit will actually record it remotely for us and handle the cameras for us. They will upload it, post it, index it. Our IT department loves that. It will also archive it for us, and the best part about it is it is integrated into Board Docs, which is fabulous, and Board Docs is great because you're seeing part of Board Docs here. It actually will help automate our board agenda amendment process, and it will help our department's workflow better. And it's OCR searchable, which is a fabulous capability that we currently do not have, where if I need to search something to find information regarding one of our current topics or something that we've done in the past, I can go back through and find that very easy instead of digging through several filing cabinets. Another nice feature of this is the ability that it has to hold our employee handbooks, our student handbooks, and our policy and procedure manuals, which, again, is all OCR searchable. The public will like that aspect, so when they go to look at the website and you find a policy, instead of trying to figure out what our number code is and where it might be, they can just go in there and type in charitable gifts, and it will pull up that information. And you can see that demonstrated here by going to policies, and then just typing in charitable gifts, and then searching, and then it pulls up everything that it has. And so you can just click on whichever one you think it might be. Another nice aspect of this is if you're searching for something, it'll give you all the background information, not just the most current version, which our employees will like that, because there are times when they need to refer back to previous policies, and we don't have that. We just have our most current revised policy. So it provides a lot of nice, it helps us work smarter and not harder. And on your computers, you'll see that there are several benefits of using these two items together. We also will have Google Analytics. They'll set up the account for us. It'll show us who is viewing our, or how many people are viewing our board agendas, and what the hot topics are, so which ones they're actually watching. So I might think that Terry's budget presentation is riveting, but the general public might only have two or three people viewing it, and everybody will be viewing Summer Snowflakes, and so that people know what is most popular. So I would like you to review that, and actually, the Board Docs is approved through RESA, competitive pricing. So if you guys approve it this evening, we can work on getting that implemented, and you will make Chris Urban and I very, very happy.
I don't think Terry's going to recommend it.
Not now.
Heads up, that I was going to be picking on you. Does anybody have any questions?
Does it use voices to create the text, or how does it do that? Do you still have to type in that?
For the minutes?
Yeah.
I will be typing it. Everything is completely customizable, though. The only thing that's not is it'll number one through whatever numerically and not run in numerals. So that, I can be fast, get what you said, right?
I don't know if that's necessarily... That's what I was wondering, how they would go back and search it? If they would say something about a dog, I mean, would they, unless you caught that, would they be able to come back and say, what lion's a dog? I mean, how does that, how does that data become data?
As far as that being in the data, that would have to be something that we put in the minutes, such as like our one board meeting, we had it in Word when the gentleman complains about walking his dog by Mylan Park High.
See, I'm going to check that.
That would, yes, you'll have to go in there, and I could type in Norv and Dog or MHS and search, and those, it should bring up that topic, because that was a delegation, and so he did mention that, and that would be put in the minutes. However, if it's just a general comment or not necessarily noteworthy, not that everything you guys say is unimportant, but if I typed all of that up, our minutes would be one.
Okay, and so we actually, the staff puts in what's in the, it's only going to record in minutes?
Right, and then it'll have like the supporting material instead of copying and pasting currently, like we do, which is better than typing it all over again, but not as good as this, which will automatically just import it in for us.
So if someone could say, this, on June 24th, they were talking about this policy, I want to go back, and they'll be able to punch in and get the video of that discussion, and they'll identify that?
Yes.
Why don't we? Or we should be able to do that, is what I want.
Correct. Oh, and I forgot, the best part you're going to love about this, this Board Docs?
Yes, do.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry. It does not, but I see you have your pen in hand. It will permit you to put your notes on the computer, and only viewable to you. So if you're reviewing your agenda, and you want to make a note about this dog's coming, walking by Mylan Park High, you can add that note to your comment section, and that way, you'll not have to mention that at the board meeting. So that's a nice feature, and it's only, it's private only. You'll be able to see it. The other board members will not be able to reach your thoughts or be in your head, if you will, so...
Or be an F in violation.
Right, they, it protects you from that. So it's only viewable to you. There is 24/7 tech support with both programs, and they do a lot of tech support, 24/7s, and they do on-site training. So we're going to have some training before we project.
Yes, Nancy. So the Board Docs I knew about, what actually is the Swagit? Is it a different software system?
Why it is, it's a component that Board Docs uses to integrate video and audio into their software. So that way, it works hand-in-hand.
So if we wouldn't get both things, then there's some things we wouldn't have?
Correct.
That you've been discussing?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, if you only did Board Docs, you would not have video with it. And Board Docs pretty much only integrates with it, Swagit, which is a nice feature, the way they have an index and stuff like that, and it all is on our website. It does not route you off to a different website. It's all housed within our webpage.
So the Board Docs, it's a one-time, well, a $1,000 setup fee and then $7,100 per year?
Correct.
And then the Swagit is $7,100 per month?
Yes, for three meetings, total of three meetings. That's not just per meeting, it's for three meetings. And the best thing about this is both products, the price does not go up. We are locked in for as long as we continue with them. Now, if we, you know, terminate the contract with them and then decide we want to go back, they can increase it, but currently, if we accept, they have, they will guarantee to keep us locked in at those prices.
Okay, and so RESA, we do this through the RESA, the Regional Education Service Agency?
Correct.
Who has worked with this organization and has several of these installations throughout the state?
Correct.
And you're pleased with what those other people told you about their experience?
Oh, they cannot praise it enough. In fact, I told the secretaries throughout the county, and the ones that had it raved about it, and those that didn't wished they did have it, and we have several more counties who are ready to get on board and get the program as well.
They have Board Docs, or they have both?
No, they have Board Docs. We would be the first in the state of West Virginia to use the integrated Swagit program with it, because the majority of county board of educations do not video their board meetings.
And we also had interfaces with Apple products?
Oh, yes.
Which we use, and many counties don't.
Yes, yes, that is very nice, the integration with all mobile devices, the Android and Apple products, and anytime Apple, because we know they're great at updating their operating software, all of those updates are included for free for us. They will upgrade, so that way, it is viewable on the most current version, and that is at no charge to us.
All right.
Madam President, I would recommend that the board approve purchasing Board Docs and Swagit.
All right, may I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, we've asked a lot of questions already. Are there any others? No? Everyone satisfied with what they've heard? All right, all in favor of purchasing the Board Docs in integration with Swagit? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise? All right, so we have $1,000 to, for initial setup fee, and $7,100 per year while we subscribe. A lot of data will be available to a lot of people now. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to pull item E off the agenda.
Okay. May I have a motion to remove item E from the agenda?
So move.
All right.
Come back at a later date, I guess.
Yeah, it'll be apparent when we get to the bids.
Okay, we weren't ready for it yet, right? Okay. All right. All in favor of removing it, say aye. All right, those opposed? Good. All right?
Madam President, we have a short report on middle school concussions from Mrs. Mannan.
Well, this is simply an informational item right now to let you know that we are looking at instituting the IMPACT program at our middle schools. And we have been talking about this for some time, and we had a meeting with our athletic directors, and Mike Castle from HealthWorks, who is going to work with us to institute a return-to-play protocol at the middle school level, and begin the idea of who's going to get licensing for the IMPACT program at our middle schools, and make a determination about who will be responsible for monitoring that program. But Mike is going to be instrumental in helping us with the training of this IMPACT program and the return to our protocols, a return to play protocols for our students who have been affected with head injury.
So I'm assuming this is very similar to the one we have at the high school level?
It's identical.
Identical, okay.
At the high school. It's just, we have had that in place for many years. It's very successful, but as you well know, the focus on head injuries has become more and more pronounced, and certainly is in the news, and we feel that there are multiple sports at the middle school level that need our attention, and it's up to us to make sure that we have this program in place.
Okay, do we need a motion?
I don't think we do, no. We just simply wanted to make you aware.
It's just information.
We've talked about it before, but we really are going to move on it for trainings beginning this summer.
Good, okay.
Has it reduced concussions at the high school?
Well, sir, I don't know if it has reduced concussions. I think it has made us more aware, and we have instituted that return-to-play protocol so that we're making sure that before students go back onto the field of play, that they are cognitively okay.
I guess there is no such program to...
Probably not.
I guess there's one, but nobody wants to even think about it.
Well, I think prevention with the equipment, the utilization equipment, we've really focused on that.
Well, we do all we can there. We're very, again, cognizant every other year. It's toter pads or helmets, you know, we've done all we can in terms of the equipment to make sure that we've got the latest, greatest equipment to provide protection for head injuries. So this is just one more step.
Yes, I was impressed with the high school level. I think it's good that we've gotten it here, because we do have sports with contact.
So thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Madam President, I would like to recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
All right, may I have a motion? All right.
Second.
All right. Any questions?
My only question got fixed, the date.
The date? All right.
Student hurt baby was a mess. That's like...
Yeah, you're the one that brought that up? Okay, good.
The captain's problem.
Oh. All right. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, I'd like to recommend that the board reject all the bids on the MHS press box. They came in at approximately $250,000 over budget.
Okay, so we're going to go back to ground zero, huh?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion?
So move.
To reject, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to reject in a second. Okay, so we have a motion to reject and a second, the bids for the new press box for Morgantown High School because it is over budget. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Those bids are so tight, four bids to be within $90,000 in a plus million dollar project, it was designed wrong. That's a design problem. That's, that's somebody designing more than what they can afford. Because that, I mean, that's a lot of work for them contractors to do that. And I don't think it's fair for the contractors to have to do all this work because someone overdesigned it. I just wonder when we come back through, who's going to be willing to rebid? Because I mean, those, those are accurate bids. I mean, I don't, I haven't even looked at the project. I can look at it and tell you they did a good job with the, with the bid.
Well, it may require some reengineering. So we'll see where that goes.
Maybe the menu was too big.
The menu?
That's what I'm saying. Maybe they didn't realize when, when people requested what they wanted, what it actually was going to cost.
Well, that was, I think that was the architect's job to say, "We can't afford that." I mean, or design it to something we can afford. There's a lot of wasted time in a bid of this size and I can, I can sit on the other side as a contractor and say, you know, that was, that was, I don't, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that I'm going to vote to approve this, but I think we need to let Ted and his company know that they need to get more realistic.
I don't know what process they use. Usually they do speak with the people who are going to use the facility and get as much input as they can. And it's seldom we've ever rejected an entire bid. Usually we do get within the range, but.
Wow. And, I mean, this is all, people raise the money for this and they know exactly how much money they have. I'm almost surprised it didn't work backwards in some way.
That's what my complaint is, Nancy. It's just simply that the architect designed, it was overdesigned and bid correctly based on the fact we've got four bids that close. So this needs to go back to the architect and say, you know, we need to, we need to be careful that we don't waste people's time because it's not necessarily a good thing for us in the future to be rejecting bids as a whole because, you know, people will quit bidding our work and it'll make it more expensive for the school system.
Well, and the other thing is too, though, I think the design was to go into that whole project and that was actually done, what, four started, four years ago, five years ago at that time, it may have been.
Within the amount.
Within the amount.
I think we need to get, maybe look at finding someone that can design this as we need it to be designed, would be my comment on this project. Because we're going to lose, we're going to lose the confidence of the local contractors.
Well, you've heard the comments of the board. Now, all in favor of rejecting these bids, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so the recommendation is take it back, reengineer it, bring it back with hopefully more reasonable cost.
I wouldn't necessarily say that was a recommendation with taking it back to reengineer. I think we might want to look at someone else to do that.
Okay. All right. Terry?
Under discussion, Ander Rother, we have a after-school tutoring, elementary report from Mrs. Talarico.
And to stay on theme tonight, though, I have to point out a special thanks to Eastwood's sister school in China. And the artwork that you see here, even though I know our students could do this, it is extremely impressive. So compliments to Mayor Jenny Celine for this connection and for Judy Reckert to have worked out this online, on-loan opportunity to display this work from our own Eastwood sister school, which I wish I could pronounce the name, but I'd lost to do so. So I know everyone is enjoying it and I wanted to point it out and thank the appropriate folks.
Very exciting.
Absolutely. And with that said, then, along our theme of providing as much support for student achievement as possible, we have a program here and you have the highlights of that on a quick handout that I'm very excited about. It's been something that Brookhaven has piloted, already have it in place, but we're going to mirror that at every elementary school. That's 10 of our schools, looking at students who are at risk. And they are being invited to participate in after-school opportunities and they will have a choice. Some folks might prefer to come Mondays and Wednesdays, some Tuesdays or Thursdays. So it will be at apparent convenience, once they're registered, to pick the two days or an hour and a half each of those two days to be served. And we've identified students, anywhere from 20 students to 45, depending on the size of the school. They each have a budget, they have, again, staff on, in-house that are willing to work to make this happen. And again, the focus will be on math, reading comprehension, integrated with technology. So we'd like just to present that to you, not for recommendation, but for your information assisting.
Okay, now this is the elementary school, so it starts with kindergarten, first grade?
It will, yes, kindergarten, it absolutely can encompass anything from kindergarten to fifth grade. The focus, I will say to you, more likely will be third.
Fifth.
Fifth, yes.
Which is right where we want to be?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, good.
And so is transportation part of this?
No.
Or the families will have to be?
The families, yes. And they make the decision, there is a letter for them that will give them the opportunity to fit what's most convenient to their schedule. And again, we've had real success with this at Brookhaven, so we're replicating it for the other schools. And so it's, it's designed to work with the parent's schedule, let them have a lot of choice in it, but also designed to extend the learning and the specificity of the areas that students need assistance in.
What kind of assistance will the parents get?
That's a fair question and that part has not been designed in this. There are numerous things at the schools where the parents are invited in. I could see some opportunity here to fold that in and so I'm going to take that thought and see if there would be something that we could perhaps integrate there.
Reinforce for the parents how to do that.
Yes, yes. I think that's a lovely thought and because sometimes, I know schedules are very busy for everyone, but if we could do that, I think it would be empowering for all the families. So I could see some value there.
So we're looking at, most of these students you said will just be an hour after just this?
An hour and a half.
Hour and a half?
Yes, and I want to say, curate your diet and child nutrition, already a part of this, we did think of that. Snacks will be provided because little ones need time and they need to be rehydrated. So won't be any cupcakes, but there will be nutritious snacks for the children provided through child nutrition.
Okay.
So will, so then, will that be something that you think the perk will do then?
I think that's a great idea and we'll just, we'll just expand on that now that I've heard this. I really hadn't developed that in there, but I, I could see that happening very easily, yes.
Is it feasible to have maybe parents just sit in and observe because they will learn just from watching?
And they certainly wouldn't like, that's a great idea, too. We need to open that up and again, it's a little easier to open that up at that point rather than the normal school day.
Because I think parents might be hesitant, say, "Well, if I go, then I'm going to be tested," whatever, like sit there and observe.
I think that's a great thought and I think we can expand enough to do all of those things right here.
I don't know if that would affect, you know, little, little Ronnie paying attention more to mom sitting back there.
Sometimes, yes. Sometimes, no.
Poor Ronnie.
So how many, how many tutors will there actually be there?
And it depends again on whether it's 20 students or 45. So what we're trying to have is groups of not more than eight. So somewhere six to eight and then staffed accordingly. And again, because we're doing this, for example, on a Monday and a Wednesday, then you're going to have, you know, not as many students there because then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you'll have another group of students. So it'll be smaller groups, at least two instructors.
Okay, so.
In all the time I've been here, this is the most exciting thing, as I've said on this board, that I've seen. I've asked for this and ask and tried to then have beat the superintendency here about reading proficiencies. So we're halfway there. We're 47% proficient in reading on the third grade level. If we get 25% in the class, we just need the other 25 up to 50 and get these kids back on track. And I think this is something that's going to make such a great difference. And I'd like to see the numbers and how this improves the students. And I think if we can get these kids reading on level, it's going to make a difference 10 years from now that we're not going to even be able to understand what happens. I think this is the trip to education. I think this reading, math, getting these kids confident at this young age is the difference. And again, I think you get the parents involved. We can't fight that battle by ourselves, it's got to come from home, too. We can't blame the parents, though.
It does take the village. I mean, we all know that.
Well, I mean, the successful schools, if you look deeper into it, they go home and get education, too.
Absolutely.
And it's not that some parents don't do it. Some parents say, "I don't know how to do it." So that's what I'm saying, if they can sit and watch a teacher in action and kind of get that lingo and then, then you have the same flow when they get home and the kids join the same page.
I agree totally. So I think, like I said, it's easy to do just what I've heard there in the statement, to just make this a little bit stronger. But again, I do want to offer that there's a lot of intervention happening in the school within the school day. Eastwood has a wonderful program right now toward that very end. Now, that's during the school day, however. And this is something we wanted to do to honor some of the thoughts that were out there that would extend the day and the opportunities for students outside the school day. So I think this speaks to that and the idea that it's offered at every one of our elementary schools will be. Brookhaven's already started, the rest of us are just starting.
Good. This does support the direction we've been giving for, what, at least three years and that is addressing those third grade reading level. And so I know we do it in many ways, but this is, I think this is a nice way to do it. And if the parents are involved, you know, how many times have you ever watched your child?
Yes.
In the classroom?
Not much.
Well, you get papers back and you work on it at home maybe, but you never really see them in the context of the classroom. So I'm sure that that's a bit of a different dimension and I'm sure parents can learn a lot more about their child and where they may need some help, so.
All we have to do is watch sports.
True.
I'm serious, they take the kids to the games and their practices and they watch that and they go home and they get all the support for their sports, whatever sport that might be. We just need to build that into our, you know, educational side.
We can make that happen? That's great, thank you.
Sounds exciting.
Is there, Todd, is there any intent then to scale back or change in any way? The amount of homework youngsters might be doing in regard to this program and homework?
And Dr. Harvey, I think you know and I, obviously all of us involved here at any level, understand that homework has limited value. There, there's a place for some specific work on areas, but an hour and a half of homework is not valuable and has not, no research will give you that, nor is it, it impedes, I think, family time, to be quite honest, that's my opinion, but I think there's a place for some, for practice and for some work in that area. But certainly, we're very cognizant of that, Dr. Harvey, and we actually have some protocols in place to scale that back, to make it in concert with, yes, an extension of the learning, but not just repetitive practice, which takes time away from families and better spend in this arena.
Really, really great idea. I've often wondered why it is we built these magnificent buildings and hired tremendous teachers and we send the kids home to be taught by the parents. I've never quite understood that.
Okay, thank you. I'm excited to hear how this turns out and at some point, if you give us a report?
Yes, we certainly will.
Even get some feedback from parents.
Absolutely. I think that would be good for you to hear from teachers and parents and students.
I was going to say, and the childrens.
Okay. Terry?
Madam President, I'd like to make one correction to the personnel list before you approve it. Page two, line 20, after the word request, we need to insert the word intermittent. So it will be request an intermittent caregiver leave of absence.
Okay. So.
Page two, line 20 on the personnel list. That's the addendum.
That's the addendum. Page two, line 20. And you said.
After the word request, at the end there, we need to insert the word intermittent.
Intermittent, okay, intermittent.
It'll be an intermittent caregiver leave.
Okay. Everybody hear that? All right.
Other than that, I'd like to recommend the approval of the personnel list and the addendum as presented.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Should I move?
Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How will the classroom be managed with that intermittent leave? I mean, is that, is the principal?
A day-to-day, so.
And the principal has arranged that based on the family needs there, yes.
So?
Yes.
So that there'll be continuity in the classroom and be instructional?
Yes, and that's a very good point because that does, whenever we don't have our greater teachers, certainly it's, it's a disruption, but I think the principal has planned ahead here with that teacher that's taking the lead to make this happen here, so.
There's no problem with giving her leave, it's just, it's just.
It is?
It's going to be actually an extra burden on her to make sure that the sub can come in when she's, since it's not going to be an extended period.
Okay. All in favor of the personnel agenda as presented with the addition of intermittent, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carries. When is our next meeting?
March 10.
March 10? All right.
Nothing between now and then?
Next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting. At 6:00 with a hearing.
Calendar hearing.
Calendar hearing.
Again, it's a surprise.
At Sun Press. Did you hear that? Sun Press, 6:00, calendar hearing before that meeting. Adjourned.